I call this meeting of the July 22, 2024 school board meeting to order. Pledge of legions, if you're willing and able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody's got mics on? Okay. Moving on to approval of agenda. Additions are 3.11, approved 24, 25 contracts with SWWC. And then there is a deletion of 3.2.1, approved MOU with Southwest Health and Human Services. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second. It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comment?
None.
Okay. Presentation?
None.
Okay. Consent agenda. 6.1, approved minutes of the regular school board meeting of June 24, 2024. 6.2, approved minutes of the special school board meeting, July 18, or excuse me, 11, 2024. And 6.3, personal report action required, new subs, contracts, resignations, volunteers. Do I have a motion to approve these items?
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to financials, review of budget year to date. Jackie?
Okay, this is action for fiscal year '24 still. Currently at, whoops, 97%. We'll still be getting more fiscal year '24 bills. They're starting to slow down, and I'm sure we'll still have some more that are coming in. I won't be able to do a 2025 one until the September board meeting, until I run the first close of the books, or else everything's combined and it wouldn't make any sense.
Perfect.
So that's where we're at there.
Okay. 7.2, treasurer's report for June 30, 2024.
Okay, current cash balance is 10.1 million. Last year was 9.4 million. Just good.
Any questions for Jackie? I need a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Some moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve the treasurer's report. Any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approved 2023A bonds treasurer's report.
Yeah, this is for the additional bond money. We have 2,794,267 dollars in that account.
Any questions? I need a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. 7.4, approve regular bills. Any questions on any of the regular, or the, yeah, regular bills?
I had a few.
Okay.
Did we get new lawyers?
Pemberton was approved, yeah.
Okay. Did I miss that somewhere?
It was in the beginning.
Organizational meeting.
At the organizational meeting.
Oh, okay. And then on page eight, Bellwether Media LLC. I'm just wondering what that is.
Those are library books.
Library books?
For the elementary school, yep.
There must be a whole lot of NFL team profiles, huh? Because I seen that, and I'm like, what is that? Okay. Good, good with me. Page 18, AGC Networks. Just because I don't remember seeing these ever on here before, so I'm just wondering what they actually are.
6,700 hours. I thought I saw Josh in here.
What was the name of it again?
It's something with technology.
ACG.
I can't tell you for sure where that is.
AGC Networks Incorporated.
It's coming out of Josh's budget, so it's something.
And that's on page 18?
18.
Right at the bottom, no?
Yeah, AGC Network, and we've paid them before.
What does AGC Network do for us?
It was 6,700.
IP phones in the building.
IP phones in the building.
All the phones in every classroom.
Phone systems.
Ah.
Okay, thanks.
Good to know. I got more. 20, page 22. Follett School Solutions. I mean, I've seen that shit. It says C-Attached, so I was just wondering what C-Attached was.
Page 22, you said?
Yep.
That, I know what that is. That is the inventory system we use.
In the library.
In the library, yeah.
In the library. Thank you. And then the last one is on page 23. It's the very last one, Lightspeed Technologies. I'm guessing that it says C-Attached, so I was just wondering what that was.
Lightspeed Technologies, it's usually for special needs, and it's usually a, how much does it arm up? That would be for, to put a hearing impaired system in a classroom.
Okay. And then I see that we must have, like, done lots of software updates, because there was a whole bunch of money dedicated for software. Is that right?
Yeah, there's typically, typically, there, yeah.
What are you referring to?
Well, there's a whole bunch, like, I didn't, I didn't write any of those down.
Was it, yeah, I, I.
There was, like, 13,000, 15,000. They, they just said technology, so I was just, or software.
And it would just.
Page 17, Region One Information Services.
Yes, that's our synergy system, our student support system.
Okay, that was one of them. And then there was, I mean, there was a whole bunch. But, yeah.
And when it's depending on.
Frontline technologies, that was software.
Substitute calling system and our time clock.
And our recruiting.
Yeah.
Or human resources, online application system.
Oh, good to know.
The Cellus that's on there, that's a 15,000, that's an instructional software, that's.
Yeah, I seen that one. So I was just assuming that it was all software. I'm like, oh, we must have got, like, lots of updates.
You know, they're annual ones.
Annual ones?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions?
Sorry.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the regular bills?
Some moved.
So a motion and seconded to approve the regular bills for, approve the regular bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. 7.5, approve high school activity bills. Any questions on those? So there hasn't really been any this time. Just need a motion to approve the high school activity bills.
Some move.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve the high school activity bills. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion passes. Board four on board reports and updates. With a policy meeting, we went through lots of policies, as you can see.
That's the only meeting I went to, though, I think.
Negotiations had a meeting with.
We started the first negotiations with the custodial and Paris.
Two educational support contracts.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Moving on to administrator's report. Clint?
Well, you see my report attached, just a few things to talk about. Just a quick update on the property damage. We're moving forward to get the concrete and the block structure replaced that was damaged due to the arson fire that occurred. We've been in communication with the attorney, seeking some restitution. I know that our insurance has stepped in, obviously, but we have a $10,000 deductible, so we're hoping to recoup that, as you can see. And I have, don't have any other updates for you other than that at this point in time. So waiting to see and have asked just to be apprised of any changes or updates, because again, that's something we do expect. Obviously, we're getting to a point where we need to start talking our strategic plans. We're looking at some different solutions for that, and we'll bring forward a couple of ideas in terms of some partners. And roofing, we, we had Tremco out, and they have reviewed our roof. I don't have a report. They will be in, at our August meeting, is what we're expecting, to provide an update on their findings. What they have discovered, just at a high level, there's some flashing areas that are in some pretty tough shape around some of the air handlers. There's some facade issues, some of the things that you heard about previously from Tremco, where the, oh, I, the wicking strips that are through the wall to help wick away water, some of those were tarred over. So there were, there are a number of little things and some big things, too, that need some attention. So we're hopeful that, that we can, after hearing the report from Tremco, get on, on a path to get the project bid and get things moving. We had the air handler replaced. You saw the large crane. That, that certainly got a lot of attention in town, and it's good to have that done. And the cell phone policy, we've already started to communicate. I know it's kind of somewhat contingent upon our final actions tonight, but starting to communicate that information out. And I think, I think there's going to be some positive feedback. I'm fully expecting as well that there's going to be some pushback, but I think that we'll, we'll be ready for that. Some Title IX training going on, and then I just want to take a moment to express on behalf of the district and the school board, our condolences to the Darvo family. That's always a tough situation, and we know that she was an incredible asset and participant of our school district for the last several years. And again, we want to express our deep sympathies to the entire family and the community as a whole. So those are the things I wanted to share.
Thank you. I thought the newspaper article was good, too. It's very good, so. Okay. Let's see here. Moving on to discussion items. Isn't there usually principal, or you're not doing principal reports? Okay.
Usually don't miss so much time.
Perfect. Okay. Discussion items. Activities, transportation discussions. 10.1.
So you see a couple of attachments that Rick has provided, and again, these are just for discussion right now. And as we look at these, one of the things that, that Mr. Zoller and I have talked about is creating a more standardized process and procedure. Since this was the first year of, of moving this direction, we just recognize that there are some places where we have to become more standardized, and here's the expectation. So that's something we're working through, but. And part of it, too, is the discussion about equity. Are we going to have issues down the road with different sports claiming that there's inequity between one activity versus another? And those are things that we'll have to monitor and manage down the road as well. But Rick compiled this information and had it ready to share tonight. And again, I don't know that there's anything to act on, but if there's feedback or thoughts, reactions that you have, we'll certainly take those and.
When I talked to Rick, he kind of wanted us to have a direction that we were going in, just because he wants to kind of have it done before the fall sports start, which I kind of agree with. I think it's important that we start the year off, you know, because otherwise we're going to start to have problems when basketball starts or when volleyball, you know, or whatever starts down the road. So I know he would like us to discuss it and kind of decide what we want to do with it. As far as the, this goes, does everybody understand what it is? This is the, the first line is the total miles that the trip is. The next is the motor coach cost. So like, the first one, it would cost 14, 20, 75. The yellow bus cost would be 4, 1, 450 and 50 cents. When you get charged for the yellow bus, they charge the layover. So it's actually 552 and 50 cents. He just wanted to make sure we know that, whereas with the coach, there is no layover cost. So the real, his real cost here is what the real cost of the motor coach versus the school bus. That's the difference. And then the sport PD is what, you know, each sport paid to offset the difference. And after I think about that varsity football, I think some of it's equipment. They have to take two buses for.
My question wasn't football, it was the basketball.
Oh, okay. Then I'm not sure about that, but.
No, it's just discussion items that I.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
Is why are they, like, on the, I'm down on girls and boys' basketball Fairmont. They have the one charter, and he has two buses.
Yeah, that, I don't, I'm not sure. He was unable to make it today.
I guess I don't understand why there'd be two buses. We have this activity bus. How's that being utilized?
Tennis, golf.
It's been used a lot in the.
It's been used a lot.
Small, that's a great question.
That's what we have it for, is if there's 10 kids.
I know golf, tennis.
Because that saves us a heck of a lot of money.
Some basketball, even, like, younger kids have used, they've.
And actually, the varsity, they actually, the boys' varsity, they took it up to Marshall, like, over the holiday.
Cheerleaders have used it, I know.
So what, what is the question they hand?
Well, there was some discussion about how much motor coach is costing us versus school buses, because there is a difference in.
So, so.
The differences in price, because it used.
In negotiations, the motor coach last year went up tremendously. So we said, well, we're going to be selective then, this was to Mr. Ludoff, on which ones we use it for. Okay? So, and he was fine with that, because he just says it costs a lot to run them buses.
Yeah.
And we got that. So then we says, well, any, certain ones, you, you use it because of a distance thing. Kids get back late. It's, but then, so now, then if they want to use it, other, the actual sporting pays the difference. But now I see they added in two school buses, so that difference is very small now compared to one charter. And I don't, we need to investigate the seating and all that, and just because there's two school buses now, the cost that the sports has got to pay is very minimal.
So how many does, like, a, does a charter bus hold?
Well, that's a question for Mike. We have to investigate that, and then.
Versus a school bus.
I thought it was 40.
Which got to be 40 on the charter bus?
Two.
Is there much difference between the, the only spot would be is your equipment.
Yeah.
If it's football, there would be one, a lot.
Well, I mean, if you technically, I suppose, if you have three, I mean, I don't know what's considered full on a school bus. Is it two to a seat or three?
I would say two.
I would say.
No, no, kids is three, but I'm just saying what capacity is.
You don't want to crowd them in there.
Sometimes capacity is different than.
Right.
What's, our bleachers also are supposed to hold how many seats? But now you'd have to be like this.
I mean, usually when they go to doubleheader, they don't take three teams either, correct or correct?
Um, not, not the girls, because they don't have it.
Right.
So it's two and three, then, is that?
Right. And then I don't know, like, for boys' basketball this year, I don't know if they'll have a ninth grade team. They'd have to probably bring up eighth graders.
Which I would.
To have a freshman team.
And sometimes it depends what other schools have, too, you know, when they're going places.
If you're only having two and two, then they could, yeah.
Right.
And it's, it's all in discussion, and you got to get a plan. And I do agree with Rick wanting to have a plan, so all season long, you don't have everybody coming up to you, whatever they're doing, and none of this is doing it. I mean, neither standardized.
Standardized, yeah. And what his, this is what his thoughts were, because I asked him, like, what would you, like, as far as you see, what would be your standards that you would want it based on? And his were, if it's a state attorney, definitely take a charter bus.
Yeah.
Sections, and then he said, or 70-plus miles one way away, that are section games, 70-plus miles away. He said those, he would also think that we should use it. And then if activity or the sport offset the cost, and then varsity only. He said there was one of these that were B squad, and he said that should have never happened.
The B squad football.
Yeah. He said we're not, he said even though it's over the mile, miles, he goes, I'm sure that's why it happened, because there was some, there's some discrepancy between the old policy.
But they don't need the space.
They don't need the space. And that's what he said. That shouldn't have been done. You know, he said that's, he did admit that's.
Yep. He acknowledges.
Not sure why. So that would be his criteria that he would like to go by.
So I'm guessing all of these are the ones that got the charter bus? Not all of these got a charter?
Girls' tennis did get the charter.
Yeah, they did. These are charter buses.
I'm guessing that these are all, like, he's all got charter buses.
Yes, these all got charter buses.
So how many girls' tennis are there?
He said to me, there are, this year, I thought he said there was 30-some, but they go to Morris, and then they load that bus, and they go to Benson. That's why it says Morris Benson. So they're actually going to two, and he goes, it just.
It's just five more.
It's that many miles.
Yeah.
And so, and that's what the monovideo lacapar one is, too. They go to the monovideo first, play a match, and then they flip-flop with whoever is at the other school, and then they.
So they end up a big day involved.
Yes. So they have, it's the mileage thing. Because I asked that, too. I was like, Muhammad.
No, it's a great discussion.
Yeah. So that is the deal with those two.
Whatever's on here is what they use a charter for.
Yes, these are every instance that was used. And that second, 824, or these should be.
23.
23.
Yeah.
That 8, 19, 24 should be 23.
Charter to Tyler for one, I believe.
I didn't see that one. 45 mile, yeah. I don't know.
They have to take all of their.
Their equipment.
Equipment and props and equipment, I bet.
I bet so, too.
Yeah, that's a good question.
But, but you know, that's my thing.
Just little things like that. I mean, $500 here, $1,000 there.
Does Ludoff have a enclosed trailer?
We do.
Does the school have a closed trailer?
Band, right?
Yep. We got a, we got a.
They have, they have one, because the golf team uses it.
Okay.
A small one.
Yeah, we have one.
They pull it with the, are the bus?
Suburban.
Pull it with the suburban.
Suburban, yeah.
How about the little bus, though?
I imagine you can, I don't, I don't know if it's got a hitch.
It does not have a hitch.
The school, the activities.
Can you hitch a trailer to a school bus, like a bus?
Oh, yeah. They do a long time.
You put long load on it.
The football teams do a lot of that. You see, you see them sitting on here as a school bus with the trailer.
Yeah. So.
This is something we need to evaluate, then. I mean, that's.
I agree. Well, and the difference in cost, so all of these things, the difference to the school district is $7,916. But that's with the sports teams paying it, too. I don't know if I totally agree with that, because I just think kids are asked to fundraise, and then we're using it for busing co, you know, I mean, I don't know. I guess, whatever, if that's what the kids vote to use it for, but.
We're trying to keep costs down, too.
Yeah.
And that's, it's a big thing.
Yeah.
And, and that cost will only get larger.
Correct.
And so I think, yes, it is important to establish those benchmarks here. Correct, yeah.
I, I guess I, I agree with the state tournaments.
I support that.
I, I would also say, too, if, if you're reaching a distance of 100 miles one way, that's probably a better buffer. I mean, 70 miles, but that's.
I mean, we.
It's only for sections games, though.
Sure.
Section games of 70-plus miles is what he said. So I mean, it's not.
So it's like the Wyndham or wherever the section game is at?
Yeah. So I mean, you're, you're talking about a few games. I mean, it's not like.
Like two. Well, it looks like here, two, last year.
I mean, just so everybody knows, that's what it's section games, but. Because the whole miles, you know, if it's just a regular game, I don't think he was thinking that they should have it.
True.
Yeah, basically, you got Redwood and St. James.
Yeah.
The distance ones, yeah. A lot of them are over.
And then only varsity is, was the other thing. Which I agree with, too. I mean.
Rick, you got a pretty good handle here. The only one that we're really questioning is one act. Everybody else is pretty much.
I think, yeah, I think there's three of them, the one act, and then the two yellow buses on the second of February and the 26th of January. Why are we counting two yellow buses versus?
Right, right.
Are the numbers enough that we have to do the two yellow buses?
Right.
Versus one motor coach can do it. I mean, are we at that fine line with the number?
One motor coach and maybe the activities bus.
Well, do we want?
Or some trailing suburban, yeah.
Right, something.
What I think, the one question is, do we want activities, sports to be able to offset the cost? Because that's really what we're talking about. Right, with that, with that two yellow buses versus, because they were getting.
Yeah, but with just one yellow bus, it would cost the activity a lot more money.
Right. So that's what I'm, is that, I mean, first, we, I suppose, we need to decide if that, we want to do that. Because that's going to.
Well, I would like to know what the, the discussion is between how many a yellow bus holds versus a charter.
Oh, yeah.
Or how much are we?
What's the capacity?
Yeah.
Yeah, the difference is there. Where's the fine line with what we're doing?
The actual capacity, not the three per se, the actual.
Yeah. You're, you're, you're not going to make.
Yeah, most of the time.
If you put three Adens in, in there.
One Aiden is more than enough. You know what I mean?
If you're going to ride 100 miles, you want to be comfortable.
Right.
Right.
It's late at night when they.
When they get back and.
You just got to have a fair standard. Document why we do this.
Right.
Well, how about, we find out that information, and we bring forward a recommendation for official board action at our August meeting?
There will be some games before that.
Yep, I understand, yeah.
So we're under the.
Is it for August, though?
August, end of August, I thought he said there.
Tennis, girls' tennis.
Way late in August.
Probably a couple.
It'll be, I thought he said there was a football game, too, or something. I don't know if it's Homer or anything, but I know.
Well, that's a way of blue earth.
Yeah, the same.
Which, that'll lead to, they'll need a charter for bussing, because it's so far.
And the equipment.
But not necessarily, if it's section. You know, I mean, that's the question, you know?
But the football has always been different because of all the gear. But then do we, do we pull this trailer thing and?
That's the thing. We, to me, I feel like we can't. It has to be.
The, the sports are different.
They are.
I mean, when you, when you take into consideration the gear and the equipment, sports are different. A 30, a 30-team basketball team, if that's boys', girls', B squad, whatever that is, there's not that much equipment versus 30 football players with all their gear. That's a, we're talking oranges and apples here.
Yeah, because the charter, you throw all the gear underneath.
Yep, yep, yeah.
And all coaches' stuff, I mean, all the safety gear. Coaches' stuff, I mean, all the safety gear, I mean. It's quite a bit more than a basketball team.
Yep, things aren't going to be equal from a comfortability standpoint. It's just gonna be the way it is.
But we need to have a standard.
Right.
So when one, one sport asks, why is this?
Yep.
I say we investigate it, get some answers before.
Okay, for the full board or, I don't know if the activity, I think perhaps the activities person. Though. Cause I know Rick tried to meet with them, but he's gone and so.
They just do the full board on that one.
We can just do the full board, yeah, let's do that and get a recommendation brought forward. That we can act on.
Okay.
All right, very good.
We'll discuss on that. Um, that's just a discussion. So, yeah, first reading in the middle school, high school handbook, ten point two.
These are works in progress. Um, there are a few references to some policies that uh, we'll be acting on. So again, that's why I say it's somewhat of a work in progress. I don't know if, um, Mrs. Ortman, you wanted to speak to anything in particular about the handbooks. Uh, I know she worked incredibly hard as, as well and worked, um, with both Kathy as well as Deb to bring this product to you. And, and again, um, there may be some formatting things that need to be tightened up a little bit, but for the most part, I think you get the idea as you look through it. You see some of the highlights with the changes, some of the strike through with the deletions.
Policies, policies will all be updated after tonight's meeting.
Yep, after, after the meeting this evening. That's why it's first reading, so.
I do apologize that you didn't have enough, you know, ample time to leave to look it over and pour over it. Last week was a little bit crazy with all the things that were going on, that were going on at school. And so I got behind on this, so I do apologize. Um, just a few of the basic changes where obviously the schedule, we're moving from the block slash skinny to the seven period day and that is gonna be on, I just added, which four. I just need to, we took some things out, we add some things in, and so it doesn't look as pretty as it's going to at the end, and that's fine. This is just like the ba- the basic need of it. Um, I took the advisement of Dr. Willard and, um, just tried to use as much of the model handbook as I could, just so we stay in full compliance with the state of Minnesota. So if there's something in here and you're saying, gosh, why did we put that in there or why is it worded in this way? Um, that, that's something that I, I can probably change. Uh, not a lot of policies are changing for us. It's just a lot of, um, a lot more, it's very, very worded, very. Um, some things we did have in our policy handbook that we needed to be state compliant. But our attendance policy is not changing. It's this, it's just a little bit worded, a little bit differently. Our cell phone policy is, for the most part, the same with slightly different consequences. We just haven't been enforcing that cell phone policy at the high school level at all. So it's not, it's not a, which I shouldn't say everyone, a, a lot of my staff were doing that very differently, but um, a- as a whole, you're able, you have been able to text your kids and they'll get back to you right away. And that's what we're trying to get away from now. So the, obviously the cell phone policy's a little bit different. Um, otherwise. Um, okay, graduation requirements, I wanna talk to you about that. You may look at that and think, oh, my goodness, we're watering down our curriculum. We're watering down our requirements. It's twenty-one point five credits. Um, I, I really just wanna get back to what the state requires. So for some reason, we had a magic number of fifty-nine, I believe it was. At one point, it was forty-four. Um, we've never really changed the number of instructional minutes in a day. So having, having these numbers just sort of fluctuate, we're gonna have fifty-nine credits to graduate. What does that actually mean? One credit is worth one period. High school geometry, you take it all year, first period, that's one credit. High school English, you take it all four years, one period, one year, all year long, four times, that's four credits. So it, it's just to simplify things. So Ellen and I are gonna work on going into the system and figuring out how to move this around to kids that are already in high school and have already received credit. We're gonna be moving that around. Does that make sense? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why did we ever go into this block schedule? When was that?
COVID.
Is that, is that what it was?
No.
From what I understand, it was, it was the COVID year where, um, they were trying to minimize the number of students that were in the building at one time on specific days. So they thought it was maybe a better idea to do a block schedule where you could have a class or a double class. So instead of a fifteen-minute period, you were there for like an hour and a half, only for one semester though.
Seems like it's been a pain.
Then we just kept it, yeah.
I mean, just all the dollars that you pay this one with the skinny and a shirt. And it just seemed like very confusing. Hopefully this simplifies after what it's like.
I, I'm, that's my hope.
Okay.
I hope. I hope I can report back in September.
No, it's just, but yeah.
Yeah.
COVID was a different situation.
It was a different situation and we couldn't have everyone in the building at one time. I think they did what they had to do.
You didn't want everybody passing at the same time.
Exactly right.
You had to change the schedules up some different.
That's right. And I do want everyone passing at the same time now.
I was wondering if that's when it started.
I, it absolutely was. That's, that's, I wasn't there, but that's what I've been told.
So what is the requirements for Minne- you know, I mean, Minnesota's requirements for?
Twenty-one point five.
And ours are fifty-nine?
Right, but it's not real.
Oh.
Yours were like forty.
I remember being forty some time.
Would they be based off of more college, the way colleges do their credits?
No. No, it was, no. And I talked to Mrs. Dulos about that. And in even modifying this for next year, her thought was, let's just, uh, let's do, let's call one semester, like one, so let's, let's just geometry. You're taking it all year. So for first semester, so from September to December or January, she was thinking that you should get one credit for that. But the state of Minnesota is saying you get a half a credit for a semester and then you get the other half credit when you're done with class. So it's one full year, one credit. I don't know why we wanna mess with that, um, math, because it's already there.
So what if someone has enough credits to graduate and they're only a junior now?
I don't think that's gonna happen.
Are we gonna change their credits?
Because they're gonna.
They're getting it.
It's gonna change, okay.
So let, students that are, let's say, um, juniors, I'm gonna go back into their transcript and change everything back to what we're doing right now, which is four credits for English.
How is this gonna get portrayed to keep families? Because we, I mean, when they changed it to fifty-nine, we got a letter, they went through it all about why, that it was going up. I think if you, all of a sudden, they look at their kid's parent view and they see it's down to twenty, you're gonna have a lot of phone calls. I mean, we, we need to, you know, make sure that.
Because I know that there was an issue.
There was a big issue when it went up, cause people are very worried about their kids not being able to graduate.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely. And I don't know exactly how it's, how it's been done, but like, we have students coming from Flann drew. And South Dakota does it this way. Uh, I would think most of the Minnesota schools do it this way too. So kids were coming in that were not able to graduate because of their credits. And that's just not true.
Right.
It's almost like we have to translate another school's.
Yeah.
Um, where other schools have to translate ours, where it's just simple. Take their class for one year, it's one credit.
Yep.
So they could potentially, um, s- students need four years of English, so they need senior English, they need senior English, sophomore and freshman, so. As far as graduating early, we do have in our policy that we would allow students to graduate early if they have met all the requirements. I just don't know how that would be possible if you need a full year of English in person.
Well, if you're changing, if you're changing their credits, it won't.
For sure.
Yeah. But I think we need to be really careful about that people understand what we're doing.
Right, I will have to, I just.
I just worry about the parent view thing, like their, the student view.
Yeah, I will put that in, I will add that to my, um, presentation when I meet with parents at open house.
And kids that are taking college courses, they're, they're, I mean, you get more than one credit semester in college, so how is that?
You get credit for that. So you get a credit here at the school, you get credit, you get college credit.
The college calculators, let's just use the three for example, but because of the one hour, one year, that's the one credit here.
Yeah, so the, some of those students that are taking college courses along with a very, a full schedule here in Pikeston, they'll end up graduating with more than two twenty-one point five credits. We'll have kids that graduate with twenty-six, twenty-seven, for sure. And that's okay, cause if they, if they take the dual credits, um, they will avoid having to take some of those when they get to college. Um, aside from that. The other change was, and we're gonna talk about it, the attendance. So never mind, we'll talk about it next. Are there any, and I apologize again that this was not given to you in a timely fashion. It is just the first reading, so if you have concerns at all or questions from now until next month, I would be available to visit with you and explain things further.
Any more questions on the first reading of the middle school, high school handbook? I always bring it up at meetings also. Okay, moving on to ten point three, first reading of policy five oh three, student attendance.
Again, this is a policy that we spent some time going over. And as you view the policy, you'll notice that there's, I don't know if we have real significant changes in, in the policy language per se.
One of, uh, so the policy, the student attendance policy is the same as it always has been, except for we are taking away, if a parent calls in, for example, and says, okay, my child has a medical anything, medical situation is gone today for medical. We are going to take that parent's word for, for it, instead of requiring a doctor's note. So we're not in violation of HIPAA or FERPA or, um, making any sort of unnecessary assumptions about a person when they're gone. And so that was brought to the policy meeting, the committee meeting that we had, uh, a few weeks ago. And so I did take note of that. Um, just as parents, parents and ward members, um, having those dual roles had some concerns about that piece. So there'll be less, you know, badgering students about their doctor's notes and things like that. It's gonna be if a parent calls in or emails, uh, the attendance secretary, that's good, that's excused, excused, it just is. Unexcused is really just skipping class or we can't get ahold of the parent and the parent hasn't notified us about why their child is gone. That's an unexcused absence. If a student is unexcused for any part of a day on the day of a, an event, let's say a tennis match or a football game, they will not be able to participate in that if it's unexcused. So if they skip first hour and come in second hour, they don't get to participate unless their parent calls in and says, you know what, they were at an appointment or something along those lines.
Right, yeah.
So it'll give us, it'll allow us, it'll allow my staff and I to spend less time sort of chasing, you know, the notes and the doctor's notes and, and things like that. So I think if parents know, they can just send an email to the attendance line or make a phone call, we will accept it and at their work. They're the parent slash guardian.
We wanted to be more user friendly for the parents.
And then we discussed if it got to be excessive absences, then she would have to have a meeting.
Yeah, administration.
No matter what it is, even if it's a excused absence, if you're missing.
Insurance.
Because we kinda talked, well, and we talked about if it isn't a long-term medical thing, we need to, you know, find out how we can help. You know what I mean?
Yep, exactly.
As keeping the teacher or students, teachers up to date and get more.
Not necessarily that we need to know, we just wanna be able to help if we can.
Absolutely. That's a really great point too.
Yeah.
So we're, we're just trying to be more understanding and just, you know, respectful to the families and, and the students. And once it gets to ten, we're gonna try to avoid that number of ten for one semester, as much as we can. And we do send letters out after five, after seven. But as they're getting close to ten, so.
Right.
So that's really, that's really the only change there for, um, we don't have any, so the, the actual handbook did have some suggestions about reducing a grade if they miss so many days. And, uh, as a team, we decided that that was not appropriate for our school. So we are, um, we're sticking with what we had there and then kind of putting more responsibility on the parents to conduct us. That's really the only change there for that policy.
Okay. Any other questions about the first reading of policy five oh three? Or comments?
And again, with this, as you go through and you go home for the next couple of weeks, if you have any type of question and you want clarification, I'm, I'm definitely happy to. Cause it would be a lot of.
Okay, moving on to board action, eleven point one, resolution accepting donations. We have a donation from Christ the King for a hundred dollars for the wellness room, which we are much appreciative of. Do I need a, I just need a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded to accept the donation from, where was it again, first? Price the King, excuse me, Price the King for a hundred dollars to the wellness room. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those pose, motion passes. Eleven point two, approve two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Little Arrows preschool handbook. Any questions? It's short and sweet.
Yeah, was there any changes on that?
I just seen the names on the front.
Names, yeah.
Page or whatever it was. Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the Little Arrows preschool handbook for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
So, second.
Second. Some motion and seconded to approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five Little Arrows preschool handbook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion passes. Moving on to eleven point three, approval of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five elementary handbook. Any questions there? Do you have anything to highlight? Jen, no?
Very small.
Okay, there's no questions. I need a motion to approve the elementary handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five elementary handbook. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion passes. Eleven point four, approve the twenty-four, twenty-five activities handbook. I don't think there's much changing there. No, there wasn't. I'm gonna see what's in there. Anybody have any questions regarding the activity handbook?
What did you say about the attendance first? Like, I, I see that there was an attendance up here for activities.
Consequently.
Um, page ten, what did you say that there was an, an unexcused difference? This one says students must be in school to start up the second hour. That's what you had?
That's old.
That's old.
That's for, that's our old policy and, and that could, it didn't really make sense, cause they could, they could literally just skip first hour and be at school at nine thirty-seven and still get to participate. So that will need to be changed.
That, I would say, cause if you're, yep, then this needs to be changed.
I did not confer with Mr. Zolner on.
Page ten, or page nine?
Page nine, yeah.
Page nine, uh, Jay.
Yep, that is gonna be, they have, they can't, they cannot be gone for any unexcused time during that day of the event.
Yep.
That's what we will need to change it to.
Yeah.
Unexcused.
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 Yep, sounds good. Just so they, just so they imagine.
I'm just thinking what you, what scenarios you're gonna have. Is that a parent's gonna pull a kid out for a haircut and they're gonna miss forty minutes and come back and that's gonna be an unexcuse and they're not gonna be able to play for the day.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Don't do it that day.
Need to make that very clear.
Well, I thought if a parent called in, then it was.
If they called in with a reasonable excuse, there's a list of excuses.
Like illness or.
Dentist appointment or.
A haircut is not an excuse.
Haircut or like spray tan or anything.
We did that on a Wednesday when you get out early.
Yeah. What you do, you just gotta set a line. But it would definitely be something, if there's question here with some parents, it would definitely be something to go over and you're.
At open house, absolutely. That's what I'm planning. I've got a PowerPoint.
Focus on it a lot because if there's been enough of that, it's gonna cost.
Yep, and I just use the haircut as an ashore, cause I know it's an unexcuse, but, yep. They used to, you know, right away in the morning, get in for a haircut and they're at school at eight forty and.
That was why you can't text, because then they could always figure that out if they could get out that day. So you won't go to use your phone, so you won't know.
You are.
Do it in between classes.
Do you wanna state that with a motion, Daphne, so that we approve it with that change?
Just to be very clear on what's excused and not.
Well, and we gotta, we have to change.
That reflects the.
So that, yeah.
That reflects the board policy.
Or, I don't know. Whoever said it, sorry, yeah, okay. That. Unexcu- any, any absence of unexcused will be, you won't be able to play, right? Yeah.
Basically stating that it reflects the intent of the board policy.
The school policy, yep.
Okay. So do I have a motion with that change? To approve with that change?
Can I just say, so moved, so moved.
Second.
All right.
Wonderful. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the twenty-four, twenty-five activities handbook with the change to attendance and being able to participate with unexcused absences. Um, and Miss Ortman's gonna make sure that gets changed. This is, sorry. Um, perfect. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those pose, motion carries. Um, approve Heartland Colony lease for twenty-four, twenty-five. This is the one we do every year.
This is an annual agreement that we have with them for the school placement services, yeah.
Any questions? And it hasn't changed, correct?
Just the dates.
Just the dates, okay.
It's been a good working relationship and administration makes regular visits out there and maintain a positive working relationship with Jerry and his team.
Do I have a motion to approve the Colony, Heartland Colony lease for twenty-four, twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Heartland Colony lease for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those pose, motion passes. Approve federal title representative and homeless liaison, Jennifer Marvitz.
So this is just one of those federal requirements that we have identified, an, an individual in our district that serves as a homeless liaison and more often than not, some of those issues tend to surface or present themselves at the elementary level. Um, and we know that there may be kids, uh, that are older that do some couch surfing, if you will, moving from one house to the next, but, um, oftentimes our little people are the ones that are most adversely impacted, so just think it's appropriate, Jennifer's named accordingly.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded that we approve the federal title representative and homeless liaison as Jennifer Marvitz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those pose, motion passes. Eleven point seven, resolution approving school district number two six eight nine, long-term facility maintenance, ten-year plan.
Do you want me to talk about this, Dr.?
Yeah, go ahead. You can start and I'll fill in wherever's needed. Go ahead.
Basically, we have to do this every year and what it amounts to is we get a certain amount of LTFM money each year. So one of the spreadsheets shows the revenue we're gonna be getting. And that one's titled long-term facilities. Revenue projection. The other spreadsheet, we have to write down what we're gonna, what we plan on spending our LTFM money on. And that's on the ten-year expenditure report. And then we need to send it to the state. And we have to do this fiscal year twenty-five, which is already set through fiscal year thirty-four. So Dr. Willard and myself and Lynn sat down and discussed this. I, I, I just told them what they needed to give me. I didn't determine what we were spending it on. There you go.
Yeah, and, and as you look at it, um, obviously, taking care of our infrastructure, our building envelope, there's a lot of this that goes into that. We know that, um, we built into the plan some eventual carpet replacement. For example, you see in this room, the bubbling and everything. Again, just maintenance that needs to occur over the course. And it's a little simpler in the initial three to five years. As soon as you start extending beyond that five years, it's
Pretty hard to know.
It's difficult to know, but, um, we have a comprehensive list that we continually revisit and maintain accordingly and this is our plan right now.
And this isn't necessarily what we have to spend our money on, it's just a way to determine the LTFM, is that?
Correct.
Oh.
Right, basically what they wanna see is that, I think they just wanna make you aware of what you're receiving and what you plan on spending it on. Cause there's also one of these sheets that determine what's the beginning fund balances. And LTFM, what the revenue expenditures are and what the ending fund balance is. They just want, I think, basically, they want you to be aware of what you're spreading out. They don't want you to see like a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit in your LTFM fund balance.
And they wanna know you have a plan.
Right.
I mean, that you're not letting your facilities just fall apart and that there's an effort, because again, we know how, how expensive facilities are, so it's the more you can put into maintenance and upkeep and caring for them, the, the better off you are in the long term, so. And I think that's in the interest of the taxpayers, obviously.
Need a motion to approve the resolution, the one LTFM application.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded to approve the school district number two six eight nine, long-term facility maintenance, ten-year plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those pose, motion passes. Eleven point eight. 11.8, approved policies. Do I have to name them all or what do you want me to?
A whole bunch of policies.
I can read through them, but.
Yeah, we just, the policy numbers are good, yeah.
Policy 102, equal education opportunities. Policy 207, public hearings. 418, drug-free workplace, drug-free school. 521, student disability and non-discrimination. 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds. 602, organization of the school calendar and school day. 608, instructional services, special education. 621, literacy and read act. 722, public data and data subject requests. I need a motion to approve these policies if there aren't any questions.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded that we approve the policies listed under 11.8. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. 11.9, second reading of policy 406, public and private personal data. 410, family and medical leave. 413, harassment and violence and form. 506, student discipline and forms. 507, corporal punishment and prone restraint. 507.5, school resource officers. 514, bullying prohibition. 515, protection and privacy of pupil records and form. 524, internet technology and cellphone acceptable use and safety policy and forms. 534, school meals policy. 601, school district curriculum and instruction goals. 603, curriculum development. 708, transportation of non-public school students. 806, crisis management policy. Are there any questions on any of these policies? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion approved to approve all the policies listed under 11.9. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those pose, motion passes. 11.10, approve the MOU with Sioux Valley Energy.
And Sioux Valley is here this evening. If you have any questions, I told them I didn't anticipate there would be any, but they were prepared to answer any. So what you see attached are the documents that were referenced at our last meeting where we discussed this. And the agreement has been changed to reflect those items that, that we had discussed. So again, that's why we're recommending approval and moving it forward.
And then this is just based, there's approval based on the city allowing?
Yes, correct. And the last that I've heard, and it looks like Jay has some feedback on that as well, so.
He needs three different motions. That's why I asked him to step up.
Okay, sounds good. Three separate motions, okay.
So thanks again for having us, School Board. Dr. Willard, Deb, thank you for all that. And just as a cooperative reminder, Sioux Valley, we like to partner with other co-ops like LNO Power that's helping us with the solar rate. Actually got a special guest, Gabe, from Missouri that's kind of shadowing me this week. So again, cooperation among cooperatives to help our members in a lot of different ways. So the three different requests that we had to the School Board at the special meeting that we were requesting was the updated MOU with the landscaping rock that was included in section number two B, letter I. That was in your new updated memo. That was the first request for signage. And then we have the LNO grant application. And that really allows us to receive money from our power supplier, LNO, to finance the solar rate project. And then the third request would be signage of the SPP Fast Track application. And that was in the last attachment. And as a quick reminder, as the board is familiar with the city's moratorium on current solar, I did visit with the city admin last Friday in preparation for this meeting. And the city admin is just saying that they're still in research so that the, so the city can recommend to the P&amp;Z Commission and giving kind of some best-case scenarios, this is from the city side, is that they would have a possible approval by August 14th. P&amp;Z would then make a recommendation for full city council, possibly early September, depending on how Labor Day falls with their first, first reading. And then second reading could be occurring on September 16th. But we both all felt that that's a pretty optimistic timeline, given city governments or any kind of government. However, what we're really trying to ask the School Board today is just really focusing on those three different documents. That way, we have the time, we are continuing to talk with the city. They're not against solar. They just want to do it correctly within city limits. And that's really what they were trying to express to us. It does kind of change a little bit of our timing, when to order equipment, when to get it installed, when we can have it operational. Our hopes, and hope is not a business plan, our hopes is to have it at the end of this year to get it into the queue and everything so we can have energy generating as of 2024. However, again, our, our main priority is getting those three applications signed by the School Board tonight. Any questions that I can stand by?
Is this going to move forward if it's not approved by the city and say it goes into '25?
I have talked to our power supplier, LNO. It is possible to go into 2025. It just adds another layer of complexity to the whole situation with other forms getting in the queue, that type of thing. But our, our thought would be, depending how the School Board decides tonight, we could probably even start to order equipment as soon as possible so we can get that delivered. And again, with, we had fog recently, so I don't know how that affects our freeze and snow. But if it's an early frost, that could also hinder things. But our plan is to try to get everything into the ground before, before the fall, obviously, before freezing. But there is a little bit of wiggle room if we do have to punt into 2025.
I don't know if there was certain credits that are available in '24 but not in '25.
No, I think it just, it takes a little bit of time of the revenue generation that they can provide. And again, just add some more complexity with forms to fill out.
Do they have any other questions regarding the three documents that are attached?
Can they be addressed in one motion or do we need three separate motions?
I think if the School Board's okay, maybe one motion to sign all three documents.
It's how it's being presented.
Okay, then that works.
My, my whole thought with, with the solar plan, I wish it was bigger. And just the sheer dollars of it, I, I'm a little concerned as far as really just putting this kind of smaller field on our ground isn't going to do a whole lot for us. And, and does that just, are we just creating more hurdles for ourselves for that small solar field?
Yeah, I think he addressed it at the, at the, yeah. Yeah.
Do you want to address that?
Oh, yes, please address that. Sorry, I didn't know I had to do that. I was thinking about.
So with the current updated MOU, even from when we first had the original MOU, we really tried to address that the School Board wouldn't, or the school district wouldn't for any type of costs. The reason why it's at the 20 KW level is because it does satisfy the inner, some of the interconnections that we need to provide to help our power supplier. And I imagine, were you here at the?
I was not. I missed that last one.
Gotcha. So even at a 20 KW to get it ordered, to get it installed, is LNO's grant application is at $260,000. If you start to scale energy production up, you're obviously going to incur more costs with that. So that's why we really landed on that 20 KW number to just satisfy what we need to continue to have at that location to satisfy what we need to have with the Southwest Power Pool. So anything larger, again, adds up exponentially too. And then the size of the field. We knew that that footprint, I don't know if we want to go much bigger either.
But I don't think the footprint was really that big back there. That's wasted space anyway.
It is wasted space.
It could be double that and not affect anything. It's just the cost. I mean, you're looking at half a million dollars to whoever wants to put it in there.
I was just thinking, for us to dedicate that ground for however many years, there's not much we can back to it.
But on the same token, I think it's important to show students what's out there for energy and, you know.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Discuss, we discuss that, that they come in and, you don't have things like that to do with the solar power and those type of things, which I think is important, that part of it's important.
And to educate kids, where I was going.
Yes.
Hopefully you get some benefit out of that by having it in your backyard. That's where I'm at.
Yep, go ahead.
I mean, to speak to your point, it's, adding solar on your facility is not a get-rich-type of thing, especially in our area.
Right.
Where we actually, we could have higher electricity rates and then your paybacks would be a lot quicker doing it that way. But just, solar, it can be a very cheap energy source to get back into the grid. You have to remind yourself that what it takes, the cost to get it back onto the grid costs a lot. So that's why, I forget the actual number for energy production, it's 1.37 cents per kilowatt hour. And that's our voided cost rate because you have to remember, you have to give it from your solar panels out onto the grid to be able to use. So that's why it's at that 1.37 cents per kilowatt hour. Again, not a big moneymaker for any, for any.
That doesn't cost us anything. It's.
And it's ground that you're not going to use.
We have no skin in the game really, other than, yeah.
And to your point, that's why we rewrote the MOU so that the school district was not seeing any costs onto itself.
With not much return. We didn't want to.
Not much return.
Any, any liability that we're going to have or have.
And, and I saw some of the numbers from the wind turbine and that did generate a lot of electricity. It was a lot bigger with the cost to repair it and to take it back down. There was obviously significant costs there too.
Any other questions? I need a motion to approve the MOU with Sioux Valley Energy that includes all three of the documents, correct? There's three? Yes, all three documents. Do I have a motion to approve or what are we thinking?
So moved.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the MOU with Sioux Valley Energy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those pose.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. 11.11, approve the 24-25 contracts with SWWC.
So the first two pages really sum up everything that you see in the relationship with the Service Cooperative. They base it on child count, so you see that at the very beginning. And then you can see the different relationships that we have with the Service Cooperative. If there's something in particular you want me to highlight, I can, but like the environmental health and safety pieces, they come in and, and do a lot of environmental issues with us to make certain that our indoor air quality are meeting standards and help us out with things that may come through with like the fire marshals report and those types of things. We know we have the relationship with technology, with Josh, and, and that's certainly something very valuable. And we appreciate everything he does as part of our relationship with the co-op and, and the work that he's continued to do. The bulk of what happens in the Service Cooperative relationships really lands in those special education services. And you can see how those numbers are, are looking and, and what's going on with some of those numbers. It's just one of those things that when you think nearly, well, a little, a couple hundred thousand shy of a million dollars of special education-related services tells you how intensive and significant special education is. So again, those are oftentimes federally and state mandates that we have to follow through on. And they provide those services and continue to provide the support that our principals and our teachers need to help out accordingly. And like I said, that's really the bulk of where the expenditures come from. When you look at the total being just a little over a million dollars and 819,000 of that, or, excuse me, well, over 800,000 of that coming from special education services, you see where the bulk of the responsibility lies, so.
Was there any reason why there was such a huge jump in their membership fee? Last year to this year? I mean, it's pretty significant.
I don't know all of the rationale behind the difference.
I didn't know if there was extra services available or added. And that's why it increased so much, but.
I, I don't know the specific answer to that question, Daphne. I'm sorry. I can.
It's okay.
I can research that out.
Where is that happening? It's on page two, right under educational solutions. It's the third item from the bottom.
So why is the cost less than last year? We call less services.
Social worker here. Social worker.
Okay.
Because we used to purchase the social worker services through the co-op.
Okay.
Where is that? Where is the membership piece? I don't see that. What page you say it's on?
Two.
It's underneath all the special ads.
12,596 to 29,890. Basically double.
I don't know the answer to that question. I can't, the next page. And the big health insurance.
Yeah, I say I know there was a big contract.
Which may have.
Where are my minds?
Which may be.
So I'm guessing that's where it is.
Passing it on to the end user.
Yeah, I'm guessing that's. And there unfortunately isn't much we can do, unless we find a way at the bottom.
No, it's just a.
Wow, what's that?
It is huge. It is huge.
It's a big agreement. I mean, it's.
We're looking for it here. It might explain in the contract.
And it's, it's, again, some of these things are necessary just because of those state federal mandates. And for those that don't know, Minnesota's special education mandates do exceed federal mandates. So there are higher standards than.
In Minnesota?
In Minnesota than other states around us have.
Not really, Texas, super C.
Not in this situation. And that's where Minnesota oftentimes will see students right across the line that have some significant or more intensive special education needs will come across the state line because the number of services are so much greater in Minnesota than they are in states like Iowa and South Dakota.
I know, and I know they do a great job.
Yeah, they do.
I was questioning them.
Well, it is.
That service.
It's a big amount. It's a big difference.
Do I have second?
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded that we approve the 24-25 contract with SWWC. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those pose, motion passes. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
It's been motioned and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those pose, meeting's adjourned.